Since we have a quorum, we'll go ahead and get started so that way we don't fall behind. So, we're going to go ahead and call the Clovis City Council meeting to order for December 1st, 2025 at 6:01 PM. And if you can all rise for the flag salute, Councilmember Basco will lead us in the flag salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if City Clerk Para can have the real call.
All right, Councilmember Ashbeck is here.
She is.
Councilmember Basco?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Pierce?
Here.
Mayor Moana Tua?
Here.
And Councilmember Bessenger will be absent from this meeting today.
Okay. Next, we'll move to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on an item that is in our jurisdiction but not on the agenda. You have three minutes. If you can state your name and give your address for the record.
Good evening, council, and all the great employees that come from the city and spend time to make this a great city. We're embarking on a time where it's kind of special, a time where we look at family and friends. And while it's a joyous time for a lot of people, it's also a time where there are struggles. So try to remember that when you're out, wherever you're out, that not everybody's doing as well at this season. And try to bring the joy that maybe you're feeling, share it with them. I think this helps make Clovis be a better place. And so I just wanted this reminder for everybody. I thank you that-
Thank you, Eric. Anyone else?
Bill Scott, 341 Evergreen. I just want to use up three minutes. You got a short- You got a short agenda today. Again, thanks. Hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. I know our family did, even though we had a death in the family. And Thursday, we're gonna have a funeral for her, but we're still grateful. She lived too long, a long life. She was a wife, a mother, a grandmother, and great grandmother. And we're all gonna miss her, but we're very happy that we had her in our lives. So, you know, we're thankful for that. Now, I'm gonna go off on a tangent, but bear with me. I'm gonna bring it back. I'm sure a lot of you have noticed that we're coming up on the Fourth of July this year will be the 250th anniversary of, you know, the birth, the 250th birthday of the country. And I'm kind of wondering why our education system, our news system, and our bureaucrats have, they're gonna wait till July to do this. What about last April 19th? Many of you may not know that's when Concord and the Lexington Battles happened. And that's where the shot heard around the world came from. Okay, and a few months later, in June, was the Battle of Bunker Hill. Nobody mentioned that. It wasn't on the news. Nobody made a big deal. About 250 years ago, that happened. And I imagine there's a lot of people here that don't realize that's where the saying, "Don't shoot till you see the rights of their eyes," and that the Battle of Bunker Hill did not take place on Bunker Hill. So we just completely missed that, and nobody brought it up. Nobody's trying to educate our people about our country. Well, there's another one that happened just a few weeks ago, November 11th. That was the day that the Mayflower Compact was signed. And again, I doubt there's very many people that actually read that. These people came from Europe, getting away from kings who would not allow them to practice their religion. The king wanted to control what was religion was in their country. So they got on a ship that barely floated, spent several months trying to get here, and ended up in the wrong place. They were headed for Virginia and ended up in Massachusetts. Now, Virginia had the backing of the king, so there was a kind of a structure there. But there was nothing in Massachusetts, nothing. And these people realized that we're on our own. So they decided to put together some kind of a form of government that they would all agree to, this is how we're gonna do it, we're all gonna follow it. And it's a very short, little three, three paragraph compact, but God is mentioned in that six times. Okay, that's what they believed in, and that's what they set their government to start with. Okay? Now, Thanksgiving came from that. A couple of years later, after half of them had died, they still decided they wanted to give thanks to those that were alive or be able to make it. And it was Washington, his first year, decided to honor Thanksgiving, and it expanded from that into eventually it became a national holiday. Not only do you get Thanksgiving off-
Bill, I'm gonna ask you to wrap up.
Finish it up. I'm taking up my three minutes.
Yep.
Anyway, I just wanted to say that the people that formed our government, they did believe in God. They trusted in God. And our government is made up to enhance that. It's not something that's against God. It's there to enhance our God-given rights and protect them. And that's why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and close the public comments. We'll move now to the consent calendar. Consent items are considered routine in nature and recommended for approval by the city council as a whole. Would anyone on the council like to pull any of the items one, two, and three? Okay, anyone in the count, in the chambers, in the public, like to address any of the consent items? Okay, seeing none, we'll close then.
I'll move for approval for the consent calendar.
Second. Okay, motion second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four oh with one absence or one abstention. Okay, we have two items on our hearing tonight. Administrative item is, number four is consider change of council meeting schedule. And staff on this is our city manager, Andy Hausler.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Based on council availability and our ability to shift items around, we're proposing to cancel next Monday's meeting, December the 8th. That completes my report. Here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions? Okay, anyone in the public like to address this item? Seeing none, we'll close.
I'll make a motion that we cancel the meeting of December.
Okay, we get a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in, we have motion, a second on the floor. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four oh with one absence. Next item is workshop, report on our youth commission activities and next steps. Staff on this is our city clerk, Brianna Para, and I think we have our co-chairs here as well. Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members. Good evening. Today, we are gonna have our co-chairs here from our youth commission do a presentation of where we have been so far and where we are going. So I'll turn it over to them.
Hello, everyone. Nice seeing you all again. My name is Averye Samra. I'm a senior at Buchanan, and this is my third year on the youth commission.
And I'm Jasmine Palmer, a junior at Clovis West. This is my second year on commission. We are this year's co-chairs, and we are excited to share what we've completed so far this year and what's coming up for the 2025-2026 term.
Our commission participated on our annual city tour, where we visited several important locations, including Clovis Fire Station 1, the Clovis Recreation Center, Village Green, the water treatment plant, Miss Winkles, and the Clovis Police Department. Each stop helped us educate about our city, and my favorite has to be Miss Winkles, 'cause come on, cute pets.
Our ex-officio Moore, who represents the Measure Y Oversight Board, attended her first meeting in September. She learned more about Measure Y's sales tax, how the budget allocations are processed, and received a summary of expenditures to date.
Commissioner Hammond, our ex-officio representative for the GPAC, attended a meeting in October. She had some major takeaways, including discussions on city growth, tourism, housing, and how to preserve the Clovis way of life as the community continues to grow and change.
In addition, several of our commissioners attended Youth Leadership Summit on November 15th. They represented the youth commission and took part in conversations about e-bike safety and education, outreach strategies, a possible helmet drive initiative, and ways students can use AI as an everyday tool. Earlier this year, city council and CUSD met in a joint meeting and identified three key areas affecting students and families: e-bike safety, substance abuse, and mental health. After talking it over as a commission, we agreed that these issues are having a real impact on our youth, and we wanted to step up and make a difference. So, we created ad hoc committees, with each group taking on one of these projects. Here are our next steps.
Addressing mental health and support our community is also a key priority for us. Knowing that the season of giving is approaching and is here, today we officially kick off Threads of Joy. This clothing drive collects new or like-new clothes for children and teens who need it, who do not have enough, and just like need some help. The drive runs from December 1st through December 8th, and flyers are posted around town on the City of Clovis Youth Commission website and on social media. We hope to fill every bin and bring a little extra kindness to students who could use it. Donation drop-off locations include City Hall, the Police Department, and the Senior Center, the Clovis Rec Center, and Fire Station 6. We also want to thank Officer Molly, who has been a major resource and support to our commission as we worked on this project.
We are also beginning work on a tobacco prevention project. Our role is to learn more about how tobacco use affects youth and to support efforts that promote safe environments for students. Our goal is education and awareness, and we're working with Corporal Sean O'Brien to learn more about this topic and how we can help educate our residents and youth. Lastly, as we look ahead, our final project is to create a short video about e-bike and scooter safety. It will cover the laws, rider responsibilities, and practical tips to help keep students safe. With more students using e-bikes, this is something we really want to promote. Our main goal is to educate our residents on e-bike safety and awareness, with a priority focus on helping students understand how to ride safely and responsibly. We also want to provide information on other transportation options, including ways students can use our local transit system. Altogether, these projects reflect our, reflect our commitment to helping create a safe, healthy, and supportive environment for all students. Thank you for your time and continued support as we continue our work this year.
Thank you. Great job. Any questions or comments from the council? Lynn?
I just think you all are the best. I think you are just, you are above and beyond what I think anybody would have expected from this work. So just thank you to all of you. It's just, you're really making a big difference, and it's just awesome to see. So, thanks.
I just want to say thank you for setting the example for future commissions. And I want to say to the city, to all the departments chief, and both chiefs and all the department heads, thank you for embracing the youth. I know that, you know, we kind of helped them start, but they're sort of on their own, meaning that they are finding their objective, they're finding what they want to do. And as they come to you, you have been a resource for them. And we, as the council, we really appreciate that. And great job to you both, as well, and to the rest of the commissioners. Any other comments? Okay. This time, we'll go open up to the public. Any comments or questions regarding the youth commission and their progress thus far? And if any of you want to support them in any of those three efforts, please just reach out to Brianna, and so we can help our commissioners. Okay, we'll close the public portion, bring it back. This is just a receive and file. And so, thank you very much. And I will move to city manager comments.
And I'd too like to echo and thank the youth commission tonight. They'll be helping us tremendously with our Christmas tree lighting event. So feel free to join us outside shortly after this meeting is over to welcome Santa and have some hot cocoa and cookies and just enjoy some cheer. That's what I've heard. I've been, well, we'll see. Airlines have been rough for the last few weeks. All right, so I've got a quick update on an issue and then a few highlights on events. So, creatum. So this has been an issue that has been popping up in Fresno County. The county of Fresno and the city of Fresno both have adopted some ordinances that would ban the substance at different levels, some for just natural creatum plus synthetic, and some- Some for just natural kratom plus synthetic, and some just for synthetic. This is in response to the significant health risk that concentrated kratom has, and our county public health official has detailed this. So legislation on this statewide, there was an assembly bill being considered to restrict the use of or sale of kratom and use of to residents that are 21 or over and require toddler-resistant packaging and so on. But this has been placed in the suspense file and isn't being considered at this time. It is legal federally. It's not scheduled as a controlled substance at this time, though it seems that that is gaining some steam. The FDA and other agencies continue to warn about the safety risks, and we may see federal regulation evolve. Clovis PD is aware that it's being sold in Clovis. I, in fact, saw a sign advertising it at a smoke shop near my house over the Thanksgiving holiday. And myself, along with Chief Fleming, think it's something that's worthy of bringing back to council for full consideration if something should be done in the interim before the state and/or federal act. We can bring back an item to council if that's their wish. Chief is here to ask, answer any questions you may have on this issue, because we also have a supervisor that was involved in this recently in the room.
He was just looking for someplace warm.
With that, if you have any questions on that, and then I'll move on to any other brief comments I have.
Any comments?
I mean, I'm, I'm supportive of bringing back an item for consideration. I hadn't even heard of kratom until, you know, a few weeks ago when the county brought it up. So a little education, that type of thing. I mean, I think it's certainly worthy of our consideration.
Yeah, I would agree. I, I dream of someday when the county and every city, and it could have the same regulation, because it's, so it's not as easy to buy it here, then I'll just go somewhere else. So I will aspire to that at some point would be a good, a good idea. But I think we need to, you know, tell us what we need to know and what we need to do in Clovis. But I will aspire to a county-wide practice that everyone is in a same boat on.
We can work on that and bring it back to council for their consideration. All right. And then just like, this Wednesday, we'll be having another meet with the mayor and city manager here in council chambers at 5:30. And then we have the Christmas parade this coming Saturday. So come on out and enjoy Clovis. What a great time of year to be in Clovis with all the events we have going on, including turkey runs. I heard one council member said the best, personal best at this week. That's right. With that, let's turn it back to you, Mayor. Yeah, it was the best.
Okay, council comments. Councilmember Baskel?
Just a couple of things. Just a thanks to the Senior Center and all of those who volunteered for the Thanksgiving giveaway. That was, Councilmember Besseger and myself were there for that, and it was a great job, as always. Amy and her staff and everybody, they were, they did a great job. So thank you to all of you for what you do and what you did. And yes, I did do the turkey trot on Thanksgiving morning, the 5K. And there was like 2,000 people out there for this one this year. So it's pretty cool, because, you know, in Fresno, they had theirs, and now Clovis has their own. And so the streets of Pulaski were, were full with people out running and walking and lots of families out there. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashbeck, nothing? Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Pierce?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge I attended the last meet the mayor and city manager event that was here in council chambers on November 19th. It had to do with the "In God We Trust" and any other changes to the council chambers. But I just wanted to comment on how well I thought it was run and kind of the format for it. It was really much more like a social than a meeting, and I thought that that really got people talking to each other. And the kind of casual environment, I thought, really worked well, not just for what was kind of on the table that night, but just in general. People were really comfortable. I saw people who didn't necessarily have the same opinions on issues talking with each other and, and kind of trying to get different perspectives and that. And so I talked with Paul a little bit toward the end, and I just wanted to kind of throw out there that I thought it was such a fantastic way to go about bringing people together that I could see it working very well for other issues in the future. Again, just kind of that more casual, social environment, I think, really did a good job of getting people just to communicate on a low-key, very, really, I had a good time. It was kind of fun. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I thought it was very well done. But also to keep that in mind for future issues where we want community input and that type of thing, I thought it was very effective.
Okay, and then I just wanted to report out that at the last COG meeting, the COG approved, I think it was, what, 11 to 4? Nine to five? Okay. The allocations as presented, and it's 65% existing neighborhood, 25% public transportation, 5% regional connectivity, 4% for transportation innovation, and 1% for administration. The steering committee will be meeting this week to go over the implementation guidelines. And so that was approved by the COG, and then we'll, we'll hopefully meet December 18th or something like that in the COG to finalize before January. That, that's sort of the timeline and the plan. And I don't have anything else. So we will now move. Where's my agenda? Yeah. Okay. We are adjourned at 6:21. Not a record, but good for us. So please join us outside as we welcome Santa and light up the Christmas tree.